Call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors' order for February 13th, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little. Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? Is proposal as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 Proposed motion carried. Public comments? Would like anybody out there for the public to comment on that. Claims and payments? Prove expenditures for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total 1,597,688 dollars and 99 cents. One, five-nine-seven, six-eight-eight, point-nine-nine. That includes a little over a million distribution to the mental health region and about 303,000 for the jail security project.
Moved to approve the agenda or the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution for expenditures for the county, Country View?
Country View's expenditures this week total 72,493 dollars and 44 cents. Seven-two, four-nine-three, point-four-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is received project updates and from elected officials and department heads. White, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Good morning.
This morning, the paved roads are in, are in good condition. Most of them are, are clear. The truck plows are not out today. The motor graders are out today, probably until noon today. They're finishing up with their second pass to, to Wyden and to wing out the snow on the gravel road system. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Minutes approved for February 6th, 2018 and February 8th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Contracts and agreements? This is a resolution at the contract between Blackhawk County and Eric W. Johnson of Beecher Field, Walker, Morris, Hoffman and Johnson to represent Blackhawk County in connection with the sale of Country View care facility with the attorney fee of twenty, $240 an hour with no retainer fee, $160 an hour for associate attorney fees and $100 an hour per hour for paralegal fees. Be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
No.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Waterloo to authorize a City Waterloo hired contractor to in an EPA brownfield environmental site for the purpose of completing the environmental assessment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the best bid received from Artesian Ceiling Systems Waterloo, Iowa for replacement of acoustical ceiling tile and grid for Blackhawk County Courthouse's first, second, and third floors in the amount of 299,999 dollars, $990 be approved and check direct chair to sign for the contract additional to receipt of the performance bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Rory Gebby, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further?
Rory, would you give us an update on? This has come in a little over your budgeted amount for the entire project. This is a separate part of it.
Good morning, Board. Rory Gebby, Maintenance Superintendent.
Morning.
Yes, in fact, the ceiling tile project did come over substantially higher than we originally anticipated. The square footage cost ended up being approximately about a dollar a foot, a square foot more than we anticipated when we put the budgetary number together. So as a consequence, as I'd mentioned last week, this is part of other phases within this original budget amount of 468,000. So what we are anticipating is with the lighting, the diffusers, duct work that's needed, the wall controls and the labor, we're anticipating this whole project to come in at approximately 574,000. When you back off the rebate, and this is a prescriptive rebate that we'd be getting, so it's already laid out what that rebate would be of approximately $32,000, which essentially would put this project over by 74,000 roughly. And I think I've gotten to most of the board supervisors one-on-one and kind of explained the situation. And I know that Susan had also sent out an email identifying where we were setting on our, our bonds and such. So any questions for me?
I would just propose, as I said, the same thing last year when we talked about this, that I'd rather spend just the $40,000 and switch all the lights to LED and leave the ceiling tiles as is as we accomplish the same energy savings. And so I'm going to vote no today because it's going to go over.
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you, Rory.
This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz.
No.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution, change order number three received from Dewberry Engineers, Inc. for the jail security system project in the amount of 17,620 dollars be approved as recommended by Rory Gebby, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Explain to us what this is in regards to for the public.
Absolutely. We recently, it's been probably towards the beginning of January, we did our first punch list of the facility. So we are to that point where we're substantially completed with the project. We do anticipate having at least one more punch list and also maybe another final punch list beyond that. But during this first punch list, it was identified that we had four tour guards, which a tour guard essentially is a mechanism that's put in place for the deputies to punch a button to identify themselves that they are in fact doing their rounds. They are required, I'm not 100% sure what the entity is, but it's a state entity that requires so many rounds to be done per day. What these tour guards do is identify that those rounds are taking place. So there was four of those that did not get identified on the original specifications. So this change order applies to those four. And then also during this punch list, it was also noted that there was 12 intercoms. And these intercom locations were primarily in stairwell areas, exterior to say the lockdown area of the jail. And what we found was we had an intercom on the inside, but if you get into these areas and you want to get back out, there was only a push button, no intercom. And so therefore, you would have to literally try to hear the master control on the other side of the door, which is very challenging. This was also not identified in the original specifications. So that's what these are for.
Where are you at on the overall budget for that?
Looking at change order one, two, and three, this essentially puts us at, we had a contingency of 127,711 dollars and 50 cents. This puts us at approximately 44% of that contingency. So all said and done, if there are no further change orders, this project would be approximately $71,000 under budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gebby.
You're welcome.
This is, any further questions? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business? This is a motion at personal requisition for the equipment operator, one, one, one B, full-time in the secondary roads department approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
So this position is a, a backfill, a replacement position. The main, the main item of work that this person does is they do our structural welding on our bridge crew when we, for example, when we need to drive pile and they need to be longer than 40 feet, longer than a standard pile. Those have to be welded together. This person is qualified to do that welding. Our sheet pile need to be welded together. And there are other, there is other structural welding that has to take place during the construction of the small county crew bridges. So this person, that's their primary job function in the summer months. In the winter months, they're in a plow like all of our other secondary roads people. So I'd ask for this to be backfilled.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. B, this is a resolution at tax sale certificate assignment for a vacant lot located in Waterloo, Iowa, two and to 446.31 of the code of file will be approved and said certificate of purchase of tax sale B assigned to ACC-18 LLC with a tax sale assignment fee of $10 and a tax payment of $95 is recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any?
Rita Schmidt, Treasurer. This is a, we found that when a private buyer had taken deed to a tax sale property that they had, this is a piece of a barn, the back end of the barn. It's something that Blackhawk County will not want and will clean up the record. They notified us that they would be interested in that. They were willing to pay the total amount that was due, which is the $95 on the parcel. And once they receive deed, then we will get that cleared up through the assessors to get that combined. So everything's good from this point on.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. See, this is a motion at the 2017 Blackhawk County wage listing we received and placed on file and directed county auditor to publish in the Waterloo Courier.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. D, this is a motion directed county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, February 27th in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed ordinance number 77-200 for a request submitted by Roger Kalsum at 2905 Cherrywood Lane to rezone 1.55 acres from A to AR and 2.15 acres from RS to A to swap the location for a buildable lot.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. E, this is a motion directed county auditor to advertise for a public hearing at 9:07 on February 27th in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the request submitted by Jeff Roddinghouse for a conditional amendment to the CM, Commercial Manufacturing District in order to allow the owner of a mini storage to store boats, recreational vehicles, campers, et cetera outdoors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Now, this is a resolution at the minor plat of survey submitted by David Peters to the minor plat, 12.67 acres located at 6519 Levercy Road and two lots, eight, 2.89 acres, partial zone AR agricultural to 97.9.78 acres, partial zone A Agricultural District. The property is questioned is located at 6519 Levercy Road, approximately a half mile south of Levercy Road and west of Bennington Road intersection. That approved, the county auditor would be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder. Morning.
Oh, yes, sorry. Okay, yeah, basically Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting on January 23rd, 2018, reviewed a request by David Peters to plot 12.67 acres and the two lots with 2.89 acre zone AR Agricultural Residential District and 9.78 acre zone A Agricultural District in order to allow for the construction of a single-family home on the newly created parcel. Property is located west of 6519 Levercy Road and approximately a half mile south of Levercy Road and West Bennington Road intersection. The request to plot 12.67 acres in the two lots with 2.89 acre zone Agricultural Residential District and 9.78 acre zone A Agricultural District in order to allow for the construction of a new single-family home was moved by Nagel and seconded by Schwartz to approve the minor plat request. Motion approved, carried unanimously. Property in question is located west of 6519 Levercy Road, approximately a half mile south of the Levercy Road and West Bennington Road intersection. The applicant's request to rezone 2.89 acres of the minor plat area from Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District was approved by the Board of Supervisors on December 19th, 2017. The 9.78 acres of the minor plat area is owned A Agricultural District has been zoned as such since the adoption of the Blackhawk County, County Planning and Zoning Ordinance in November 18th, 1982. The immediate area primarily consists of farmland and some wooded areas. The surrounding area is owned A Agricultural District to the north, southeast, and west of property. And the surrounding area identified as agricultural on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Future Land Use Plan. The property is not located in a special flood hazard area as designated by FEMA. The applicant is just therefore requesting to plot 12.67 acres in the two lots in order to allow for the construction of one single-family home on the newly created parcel. One parcel will be two acres and the second parcel will be 10.67 acres in size. The applicant requests to rezone 2.89 acres of the minor plat area from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District was approved by the Board of Supervisors on December 19th, 2017. The lot meets the provisions of the AR Agricultural Residential District by being over 1.5 acres in size and 150 foot wide. The technical review committee did not have any concerns in regards to this request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Any questions for Seth? Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. G, this is a motion to direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on March 6th, 2018 in Boardroom 201, Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed courthouse lighting upgrade project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. H, this is a motion directed finance director to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed Blackhawk County Budget Fiscal Year 1819 to be held on March 6th, 2018 at 9:07 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If we, if we don't, if we can't just determine the budget today and, and if we're not going to be able to have another meeting this week and maybe we can and decide on the budget, we will need to publish next week and I'll need to have it to the paper. So I don't know if we want to move ahead with this or if we're thinking we need to move the hearing to the 13th of March.
Guess I'd rather move ahead with this and see if we can schedule on for Thursday. When do you have to publish?
If we can have a decision on Thursday, I can send it to the paper. I mean, I can send it to the paper probably as late as Monday. I'll need to check with them, but they can hold a spot for us and. That's fine.
Everybody okay?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
See if we can get.
Do I have a motion and a second on this?
Did we?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. This is a motion directed county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09 on February 27th, Boardroom 201, Ordinance Number 71, Chapter 9.05, Engine Noise Reduction Ordinance, Shake Brake Ordinance, and Renaming Ordinance to Engine Noise Reduction Ordinance of the Blackhawk County Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next on the agenda is work session, discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year 19 Blackhawk County Budget.
I'm not sure how much you want to talk about today. We did have that one item in the sheriff's office that we hadn't budgeted for that we will need to include. We had removed the EDAX fees and we didn't budget anything for the new radio system, but we received a letter from Chief Olson regarding the estimated amount for that. For FY19 is going to be about 29,000. So we do need to include that in the sheriff's budget. We also heard from the recorder that they're planning to receive an increase in how much they, they get in passport registration fees. We could have an additional estimated 25,000 in revenue for FY19. And so we could combine those two, add those two items and, and it would just be a $4,000 increase in the budget if we wanted to do that.
In the sheriff's budget, there wasn't anything in there for EDAX fees that had been taken out?
Right. We took them out but didn't replace it with anything. That's correct, right, Tony? I didn't have anything.
That's correct. We were waiting to, to find out what an estimate would be on our share of the new, what we're calling access fees. Used to be EDAX fees, now they're access fees. That number, the 29,000.
29,000.
Is representative of 40% of our actual expense associated with our share of those total access fees to run the new radio system. 60% is picked up by the 911 board through their 911 surcharge funds. We're paying 40%, each of the entities are paying 40% of the actual realized expense associated with those fees. And it just took a while to get those estimates back, so that's why.
But it is a reduction in the EDAX fees.
Correct. It's a reduction over the last full year of EDAX fees. It's about 50% less than what we were paying. And we had an anomalous year there where because of the way we contracted with Raycom as the service provider, they reduced their EDAX rates substantially as we continued to build out our system. But this does represent a save, an overall savings of what we were experiencing with our access fees to the EDAX network.
Said move to add those to the 2019 fiscal year. The 29,000 increase in the sheriff's and the 25,000 increase in revenue from the recorder's office.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. We were talking about the telephone system the other day. Where do we stand on that?
I'd be supportive of delaying it for a year.
Guess for, you know, discussion, we're, at some point, we're going to have to pay for that system. And if it goes down, we're probably going to have to pay for it out of our reserves. You can put it off for a year, but at some point, you're still going to have to pay for it. So if that was pulled out, what would the effect of taking out the 340,000? How would that impact the total askings or percentage increase?
Chuck, can you put it up on the screen?
Chuck, can you turn the screen on?
Oh.
Oh.
So I, I sent around a few more scenarios, I think, last week after the meeting. The, where we had ended up last week was 2 million allocated for Country View and not using any reserves. And that was the tax askings of 40,152,470, a little over 2.5 million increase, 6.7%. And the impact on a residential property of 100,000 was an increase of $11.70. So I had sent you a couple other scenarios. One, increasing the allocation to Country View to 2.5 million, but then using 500,000 in the debt service of the debt service reserves. That is the same tax askings, 40 million, but it changes the tax rates with the debt service and the general supplemental. And the increase in residential is just slightly higher at $12.09. And then I sent you another one where we allocate 2 million to Country View, but use 500,000 of the debt service reserves. That reduces the tax askings to 39,652, an increase of 5.37% here. And then the impact on a residential of $6.96. So I've done a few more.
That scenario leaves the phone system in.
That, yeah. Those all have the phone system in. So then I've done some more going to, depending on which scenario you want to use. Let me see. Okay, so this one, let me see if this is the right one. Yeah. This one adds the 4,000 that we had just talked about with the sheriff and recorder. It, it allocates 2.5 million for Country View. It uses 500,000 in debt service reserves and it takes out the phone system, which was 332,526. That is total tax askings of 39,823, about 2.2 million increase, 5.83%. And the impact on residential of $8.72. I've got a couple other different scenarios here, but is there another one that you would like to look at?
Would, if we took, the last one you said, like, would debt service be the last amount of monies we'd use then? Or is there any, you know, what are you, what are you looking at?
So, so this one is just letting us allocate a little more to Country View, 2.5 million instead of 2 million, and taking 500,000 out of the debt service reserves. In the next several years, you know, depending on what we bond for additional bridges or road construction, we have about 2 million in that roads and bridges debt service that will, can only be used towards paying down our debt. And so eventually, we'll need to, you know, start using some of that as we get towards out, you know, and depending on how we bond. and depending on how we bond in the future. So, we can comfortably use, you know, a million of that in, in the next however many, you know, to... I don't, I don't wanna use it to, as a, you know, you wouldn't wanna use it to, to plan on it in the future, but we have it at the moment, and we can spend down some of that to lessen the impact of, um, of taxing for Country View. You know, eventually, if we, uh, if we keep Country View and continue operating Country View, we'll need to plan on taxing for the full amount that, um, is required to continue operations there.
Well, that depends on what plan we come up with too, though.
Correct.
I personally, I like this, this scenario of, I think it's, um, more realistic to, to budget two point five million for Country View, and the debt services, uh, is, is in strong, strong shape, so...
This scenario, um, adds that four thousand in. This is two and a half million for Country View, using the five hundred thousand in debt service reserves. And it is just slightly different from what we looked at, but this is where we would be if the, uh, if the phone system was left in. Increase in tax askings at six point seven percent, and a twelve dollar and thirteen increase in the, um, impact on residential.
If the county maintains Country View, we'd basically be looking at the same scenario in two thousand twenty fiscal year.
We would need to, you know, the, the amount of, uh, tax askings that we'll need for Country View, and especially depending on what county, what happens with county social services and their funding, is more realistically going to be looking, you know, like, three million. And then that's not including any capital improvements that would be required out there.
Yeah, but that's what I'm indicating, you're gonna have to put another two million in fiscal year twenty on top of two million you put in here.
Right.
And not use reserves. I was gonna say, we're kinda looking at them as a potential help for this year, but...
Does this have the radio system, or, excuse me, the telephone system in it?
Um, this, this particular scenario does, yes. With a six point seven percent increase and a twelve dollar and thirteen cent increase, three point three two percent increase in, in the taxes. And this one has the phone system in. Um, and this one here has the phone system taken out. There's an eight dollar and seventy-two cent in, increase.
Well, since...
How fast we're gonna be able to get that phone service done, Frank, you know?
Um, if you're still here?
Yeah.
You've got a better handle on that.
It would be a public hearing, and, uh, depending on, um, who has awarded the project, based on the, uh, service provider that we currently have, they indicated it would take up to about six weeks, and they would do it in phases. So they do one facility, get that complete, go on to the next facility. So, once the funds were available, and, uh, we got through the public hearing process, we would anticipate roughly six weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin.
Since Supervisor Little is not here today, um, I'd like to have us put these two scenarios on for...
Thursday.
For Thursday, to review.
And what happens if he's not here Thursday?
Uh, we, see if he can do a phone in.
Oh, okay.
Cause we're getting down to...
Yeah, okay. What you're, two scenarios are you talking about, Frank?
This one here with the phone system in.
And, in and out.
In and out of it.
Okay. And one's eight, eight dollars, and one's twelve dollars?
Yeah, it's...
Right.
The two million, five hundred thousand, with five hundred thousand being out of reserves.
Anyone have a problem with that? You know, wait till Thursday to...
No.
Tell Mr. Little's here, or...
I'd rather do that.
Be a phone.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. And if anybody's got another scenario they'd like on, let Susan know.
We might, yeah. We've got daily ones usually, so there might be.
Right.
Thank you, Susan.
Phone in, phone out. Anyone else got anything they'd like to bring up?
No, I was, I was thinking, I know something we've probably thrown around a little bit too, of the phase in and the phone, doing it at one time, but maybe partially in one year versus the other, but I'm not sure next year will look any better. So that's really where I'd go with the phone system too, probably. I'm not sure next year...
You have to also look at in two thousand twenty, state may, um...
Rollback.
Change the rollback and require counties to pick up some of that.
And if we did...
Some of those dollars that they, in my opinion, gave away to commercial industrial companies, like Walmart.
Have we had Bob Lincoln, I mean, thought about having him speak to us about some of the changes in his department and some of the things he foresees, or...
I don't know, it's up to you guys. I don't think he's gonna have any good news for our assessors or...
I guess, you know, my point is, the more we take out of reserves now, the more it's gonna impact us in future years as, as we have, uh, less tax breaks to work with.
Where does that put us, Susan, with the, using the reserves? When we talk about, we might be using some reserves where we're at now, and if we use one million, two million, or...
In general fund, reserves?
Yes, yes, not the debt service.
What percentage we stand at right now?
Since the unknown will really kinda be what we do this year.
For FY eighteen, um, assuming we, we only use two million for Country View, uh, we've, we've given them a million and a half so far, and I'm not sure if we can make it through the rest of this year with just another half a million. Uh, we are anticipating, um, them to get their, um, rate adjustment retroactively. I'm not sure when the MCOs will be doing that, and so we're sort of on a cash, um, cash flow issue there. So right now, we're looking at ending FY eighteen, um, uh, with twelve million, one sixteen in the general basic, and two point eight in the supplemental. So our unassigned is, is looking at, uh, looking like it's gonna be about twenty-eight point four percent. And then, if we use, um, you know, two and a half million for Country View, we'll be down to twenty-six point nine percent. Then moving forward, um... And, and this is, uh, you know, if we had to take money out of, out of fund balance next year, if, if we had to take, I don't know, maybe at worst case, a million. And I, I actually need to update the revenue and expenses here, but it, it looks like we could still stay above the twenty-five percent, but...
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Any other questions or concerns today? Anything else that anybody'd like to bring up, in regards to the budget? Can we look at, look at, uh, with the sheriff deputy coming and ask how many, how many people we got over thirty years? That, and, you know, in regards to putting them out and...
We can, we've had that, that issue come up before, um, and...
Probably won't go this year.
It depends.
For now.
Are, are we looking at all bargaining units, are we looking at all employees?
Employees, I'd say, look at the whole, whole gamut of it.
What's that in reference?
With different, different scenarios, what, Mr. Maggman?
What's that in reference to?
Retirement, or, out after thirty, or if you got thirty years and got your, your points, that you go out and we pay their insurance. We did it, what year was that, the last time we did that, Tony? Was Larsen in that group, wasn't it?
You're correct, there were, uh, two thousand and eight, nine?
Yeah, I thought it was about, yeah.
I can work with Debbie to put some numbers together.
There's a few in the courthouse too, that's got several years in it. They've been requesting it for several years. And it brings new blood in at a cheaper rate, and could save us some money too, maybe. Anything else coming for us this morning?
Uh, just a comment, you're not always able to bring individuals in at a cheaper rate.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Maggie.
As we've seen.
In this, in this scenario, I think we would be able to.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved in second, any further discussion?